Good evening, everybody. I'd like to welcome you to the Tuesday, September 19th, School Committee Meeting. May I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So, ma'am.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And we'd like to say hi to Natalie. I think you were probably here last time, but I didn't get to see you. So, welcome again. So, we'll move right into comments from the public. Is there anybody here tonight who'd like to address the committee about an item not on the agenda? Okay, seeing none. We'll go right into presentations and discussions of issues of interest to the committee. And I'm going to wait for Caitlin to return. She had to go grab something, so perhaps we'll go right into the 2018 budget directives. Mr. Cozort left the island a little early for a vacation he had scheduled, so he's not with us tonight. Martin, was there anything that you were asked to talk about with those? No? Great. So, these are our directives. And, I'm sorry, yeah, the district's directives. And they're open for discussion by committee members if there are any comments or concerns. I believe that at our next school committee meeting, we would vote to approve the budget directives. Are there any comments?
Are they different than last year's?
I don't see slightly different. I would imagine that they don't have anything to do with bringing the new school online. It would be a major difference if I had to compare the two. Nope, I don't have any questions. Great, fantastic. Okay, so moving right along, the draft 2018-19 school calendar. It's always a great reminder that there are generally several drafts available for discussion. This is the first of what will likely be at least a few. And I would ask committee members to take a look and see if you have any comments or questions, concerns. Do we know when Easter is? Hmm, that's a great question. Okay.
So, there's two weeks at Christmas, I do?
It looks like it's a week and a half. So, the students would come back on Wednesday, January 2nd. But they would be in school through December 21st. So, it's another somewhat short. Shorter cycle, but not quite as short as this year. Sure. Sorry, Logan. Okay, interesting. Great. Well, I would also ask for anybody who is watching at home to please feel free to send comments to either Mr. Cozort or myself. And we will have another draft of the calendar at a subsequent meeting. School committee members, if you have any comments or concerns, please do the same. And we'll see that those edits or suggestions are brought up at the next presentation. Right. Thank you. Okay, so at this time, we'll invite CPS Principal Donna Johnson and Becky Hickman up to present to us the Reader's Workshop Institute. Would you like us to sit in the audience? Is there a PowerPoint presentation? Great. Are you comfortable, Zona? You can see? Okay, I'm gonna sit down because I can't see.
Hello. I'm Donna Johnson, the Assistant Principal at Cyrus Pierce.
Becky Hickman, currently, or back in my old role as sixth grade ELA, but specifically teaching reading. And I'm gonna interrupt for one second and just say thank you, Peter. And to Mr. Cozort, who's not here in school committee, for giving me a fantastic week in New York. So, thank you very much.
So, a little background. The Reader/Reading/Writing Project at Columbia University is Lucy Cockens, the guru of reading and writing. It's her child. So, and they're constantly doing research. Their units are constantly being updated based on research. And in my previous role as an academic facilitator, I worked with the last school I was at to kind of shift them from a one-size-fits-all, everybody in the grade level is doing the same novel, everybody in the grade level is doing the same basal, shift to this work. So, when Becky came to me last year and said, "I really wanna look at going to this institute. I'm super excited to have somebody else see kind of the magic that happens when your school just becomes an ecosystem of reading." So, we're starting small. She's our seed. We're gonna nurture her and grow her into a beautiful flower. But we did get, so what we did was, this August, we went to New York City to the Reading Institute. And this is something that we had to apply for and get accepted to and begged Peter to pay for. And he did, which was wonderful. But the purpose of the week is really to learn the structure of workshop, to learn the research behind it. And it's hands-on, and it's busy, and you're going, and your brain hurts, and your feet hurt because you're walking everywhere. And it's magical. So, it's kind of a blend. They would do in this big Riverside Church here. That's where we did, like, the whole institute was there to listen to Lucy. And then we have the Columbia University College. The Forest Man Building is where we did some large group sessions, which were just focused on middle school. So, that was a learning curve for me because I came from elementary. And we did really small breakout sessions where we would go home and read our novels. And we would write many lessons. And we'd come back and practice those and try them out. So, we also had little breakout choice sessions that we could go to, like, social justice in the classroom. Are we really biasing our students by the books that are in our classroom? Yes. So, it was really, that's kind of the summary of our trip. So, some things that we learned. Richard Allington is a huge guru in reading research. And what he says is that what readers need in terms of instruction are access to books that they find fascinating, not books that we find fascinating. I'm not super excited about Diary of a Wimpy Kid, but my son is. He finds it fascinating. Protected time to read and expert instruction. But what the research shows us is we don't wanna lose any of those sides of the triangle. But the one that makes the least difference if we lose it is the expert instruction.
And I'll just, the, one of the pieces of research that I was reading is for every five weeks that a child does no reading, they drop an entire level.
So, we talk FNP levels at NES and NIS. That's what I spoke in my elementary school as well. And we're beginning to speak that in, at CPS because we know that Lexile was created by people who weren't educators. So, it's a mathematical algorithm where FNP really brings in the complexity of text and weighs the content. So, we just found this kind of fascinating that that's how important the volume of text that our students are reading is. More research. It's a big red scary word, and it is scary. So, illiteracy, not illiteracy, is when we can read and we choose not to. And we listened to Lucy Cockens and Kylene Beards.
My educational crush.
Who's her educational crush. And she is the author of Notice and Note, some, a close reading mentor text, really. And both of them said that this is on the rise, especially with our high school graduates. So, a really recent study asked high school graduates, that they both referenced, recent high school graduates, when you graduate, are you gonna pick up a book for reading pleasure? And 20% said yes, which is alarming. And so, I think in all of our minds, we think, well, yeah, because they're always on their devices. True. Oh, well, they've been close read to death to prepare for standardized testing. True. But the number one reason is that they lost their love of reading in their high school ELA class. And that doesn't happen, they didn't poll our students. These were people back in America. But what it comes down to is when we're always telling students, "This book is really important. This is really important. It's gonna hit every standard that I have to teach, and we are going to tear it apart for the next four weeks." They kind of lose that joy of reading. So, where that's important, I know that the high school is intentionally finding times for kids to do their choice reading and to kind of dive back into that. So...
Well, and I noticed this a few years ago. So, many of you know my love is Maniac McGee, that I would teach to death. And one observation, Peter had come in, and I saw the kids. I did my usual old-school. We read a chapter. We had discussion questions. We ripped it apart. I spent a month on Maniac McGee. By the time the kids got to the end of part two, they were like, "Can we just read it, please?" And I ended up just reading the entire last section of the book out loud to them. And Peter was able to come in. And again, there was the interjections and the discussion, and there were various assignments. But the kids, by the end of just having that read aloud to them and just reading the text without the pinpointed assignments and everything.
Without the comprehension questions, without the write the summary, without, they just learned to read.
They loved it. And one thing that I would take away from my girl crush, Kylanne, is that it's not about teaching a book. It's about teaching kids how to read all books. So, to get rid of that. Whole-class novel.
Yes. So, to build upon that, Kylanne says, "If we don't build choice reading into our school day, we will become a nation of illiterates." We know that we don't control the amount of books kids have access to at home, and we try. We try. The Harvey Foundation tries. Like, we all try to get books in the hands of kids. But we need to teach them, because I think that you even noticed at the beginning of this year, they're lacking stamina. They haven't been doing it all summer. We can tell them that they all need to read the thing about jellyfish. And I would guess about 70% maybe read it.
And even in the first two weeks, I've been doing a lot of independent reading, letting them read whatever they want for choice. And I've seen a lack of stamina, a lot of fake reading, not even really knowing how to choose a book, just randomly going to the bookshelf and, "Oh, got something." And then sit down, and then the eyes are all over. They're chatting with their neighbor and not paying attention. So, that's what this workshop model is all about, which we'll get to in later slides.
I promise it's gonna get more positive. So, ideas that should drive our reading instruction, that really we took out of the workshop as like ahas. The person doing the most work is learning the most. So, if you're a teacher who's just talking and doing all the work, and the students are just passively listening to you, you're learning a lot. The kids, maybe not so much, because they're not doing the work. The second one was a really big aha. So, we would never go to a baseball practice, watch the coach play the whole time. Teacher should not be giving hold group instruction, really, for more than 10 minutes. We know that that's our attention span. We know that that's a student's attention span. And if they're, if we're just talking at them, they're not interacting and practicing. And with reading, it comes down to practice. And Kelly Gallagher has done a lot of research and wrote a book called Read Aside. And unfortunately, the kids that we worry the most about, we talk at the most. We think that we can strategize and teach them to be better readers without giving them book, books that are at their level so that they can practice.
In the time.
Yes, in the time. And then finally, that the number of pages read, the volume of text, is directly associated with student achievement. So, if a student is reading a book that's really right at their level, or you and I are reading a book that's at our level, we should be able to get through a page in about 45 seconds to a minute. A child, too. So, if we are protecting time in school, and we're asking them to read at home, and I don't mean read, to fill out a reading log and a summary and vocabulary and all of that, just read, then they should be able to get through 30 to 40 books a year. And they hear that, and they're like, "Uh, just take my arm." But we really need, we need to get them there because that's what's willing to move them as readers.
And, jump in, please.
Yes.
Because I am deferring to Donna. She is really an expert, in my eyes, on this because she's coming from a place, a school that had this. But it really is about giving students complete autonomy to their reading, letting them have the choice. But it's not, I don't want you also to think that they come into a class, you see me teaching for 10 minutes, and then we all go off and read for 45, and my day is done. During that entire workshop time that they're reading, I am then, hopefully, conferencing and pulling small groups to reinforce the skills that I see the kids, that they need.
So, super differentiated. Like, I noticed that all of these kids over here, when I gave my exit ticket at the mini lesson in the carpet, they couldn't identify the main idea. I'm gonna pull these six over here to reteach this with a different text. So, just very intentional. And when they go off to read, they're not just picking any book off the shelf. There's a lot of work done in what books are appropriate for them. There's, within Fontis and Penel, there's text bands that they can choose from. And then in upper grades in elementary school, and then into middle school, there's just a lot of work with book clubs, not literature circles because we're not having a discussion director and all of that. We're coming together to set norms as our book club. And then if Becky's in my book club, I'm saying, we're agreeing on how many pages we're gonna get read. We annotate, probably, here and there. We get to our page, and we come back together and have a structured academic conversation about the book, of whatever strategy or standard has been taught in the mini lesson.
And we did all this, all week. We had a girl, Alyssa, she was amazing. She timed her mini lessons. She flipped the little timer right to you. She had those down eight, nine minutes, no more. So, we were the students the entire time with the sticky notes and the conferences. And she'd pull, "Okay, three of you come over, and let's come to the carpet in the small group." And you're like, "Oh, God, I'm in trouble." But it was fun. But the conference for me was not necessarily about validating the importance of reading. I know that, we all know that. But it was more about shifting my old-school thinking to this workshop model of me definitely taking more of a backseat and letting the kids do the work.
So, the teachers also using, in middle, in elementary school, it's more of a novel or a read aloud. In middle school, just because of time constraints, it's usually short stories or even a music video to tell a story, to use as controlled text. So, you're still teaching the on-grade-level standards. But when the kids go back to work, if they're not, if they're reading at a fourth-grade level in the sixth grade, they're applying that grade-level standard to texts that they can access because nobody wants to read a book that they only have 85% accuracy on. You're not gonna get there. Or if I'm in sixth grade and I actually read at an eighth-grade level, I'm selecting texts to help grow my level and my ability. Did we hit everything?
And that's what I'm doing a lot of work with right now, is more community building. I haven't even launched into the mini lessons yet. It's more about really getting them thinking about who they are as readers and trying to help them pick the right books.
So, we talked a little bit about this. So, in looking at illiteracy and practice, this is basically the breakdown of Reader's Workshop. So, we have a mini lesson that's 10 to 15 minutes. In middle school, 10, because our time is limited. We don't have a two-hour ELA block. And then we're in independent reading and having, it's not just the teacher sitting back and modeling what good reading looks like. This is where the work of the teacher is happening, in that differentiated, targeted, "I'm gonna go meet with this group for five minutes. I'm gonna send them on their way to do what I just asked them to do, and then I'm gonna go to this group." And then at the end, there's this share time where you're really closing it up. And that may be what you noticed during workshop, or it may be really strategically planned, where you're kind of planting a seed for tomorrow, or restating the teach point that you taught in the mini lesson. So, we've already kind of worked together on some. I'll see if the link works. Yep, yep. So, we were just, we were working on some lesson plans to get her Reader's Workshop started. So, basically, what you see is, oh, sorry. We start with a really, a connection. This is that activator. Yesterday, I was, and I want you to think of. And then goes down to the teaching. And the teaching is, this is what I'm teaching you today. Active engagement, maybe, you're sitting, I want you to turn and talk to your neighbor. Or, "I want you to stop and jot this." But they're actively, this isn't raising hands and answering the right question because we don't have time for that. It's 10 minutes. So, we want them to interact with what we've said, but in a way that they're all doing it, they're all responding, and then we're getting back to what we need to do. And then the link, we were just talking about this in a meeting. The link is, you're sending them off to say, "Today, as a reader, I want you to work on this." And then during independent work time, you're planning what you are going to be doing and what you're expecting kids to do. And then we're planning for our share or closing of the mini lesson. So, this would be the one lesson plan for the day. And then I always, as a teacher, knew who I was, who I knew I needed to meet with and kept really detailed conferencing notes.
And the Reader's Notebook is crucial to this. Each student will have their own composition notebook, and I'm going to work with them to make it fun, personal color, stickers, whatever they want. But that's where a lot of their work takes place. And even though it's reading, they are writing with the reflections or the stop-and-jots or responding to a prompt that may be given to them throughout the mini lesson.
So, even though the school year's only already started, anchor charts are a big piece of this also. So, I'm only teaching for 10 minutes, but I need to leave my kids with some reminder of what we just talked about. So, these are some of the anchor charts that Becky already has done for her classroom, which is pretty impressive.
I traced them.
You're allowed to trace from Pinterest, I think. But just, and then as you get going, you start to build these with the kids during your mini lesson. So, what they share, you might put on a Post-it note and stick up there, too, for them to share. So, our next steps, and I just went into her classroom and just took a lot of pictures of what this looks like so far, and it's only been a couple of weeks. Our next step is to continue planning collaboratively for her classroom. I've done a lot of this work, so I've told her I don't mind going in and modeling a lesson. I don't mind going, our writing teacher is picking up some writing units of study. I don't mind modeling that for her and debriefing. And this is an all just, this is standards-driven. So, the units are based in the standards. And we have ways to assess kids on the focus standards that she selects. So, for the first unit, she's really hitting RL1, which is using evidence in reading. So, really making sure that kids are getting that and hitting that. So, we've got kids who are just reading, and it's learning stamina and learning what real reading looks like and planning, and she's got a real cozy couch and environment set up there.
And this was, Donna came in when I did a little book tasting. So, we, I had books all around the room, and kids would go, and they were timed for two minutes. So, they had to read, starting on page one, as far as they got until I said, "Time." And then they had to decide if it was a yes, no, or maybe. So, they were exposed to, on any given day, 15 to 25 different texts. And now they have a list of, an already existing list of what they might wanna choose for their next book.
So, our next steps are continuing PD. We have a taped webinar that we need to find time to sit down and watch together. And then just beginning to open our doors to other people to see this, once she's confident in what she's doing because this is brand-new. But to bring other teachers in to see the good work that's happening, and hopefully it spreads. So, that's it?
Great. Thank you. Steve, put, who probably has some, if you don't want.
Thank you. So, I will open it up. Do any committee members have any comments or questions?
Do you ever use newspapers?
We use all kinds of text. So, it's also teaching kids that text is text. So, when, if you're doing an informational unit, using primary sources, secondary sources, all of that, and really finding that photographs are information, newspapers are definitely.
There is one whole unit on investigating nonfiction.
Well, I was thinking, because I do a lot of physicals on the kids, and I always ask them whether they're reading or not, whether they like to read. And I always suggest to the kids, particularly boys, that instead of playing video games, read the sports pages. Because that's something that gets them reading and isn't quite as obviously getting them into reading.
I do a survey at the beginning of every, well, for the last few years. And one of the questions is, "How do you get your news? And do you read a newspaper?" Haven't collated this year's group yet. So, it will be, I'll let you know what they said.
Um, you mentioned, first of all, this is so exciting. I think it's, it's like one of those things you hear and you go, "Yeah, of course." You know, it's like, "Yeah, okay, I get that." You talked about stamina, reading stamina. What have you found in the first week or two? Have you found students have very little stamina? And how are you getting them back to then focusing on, on the reading?
Just giving, you mean during the class? How am I, I walk over and I'll point. But it's also, one of the things that they recommend is start with a few minutes. So...
Set goals.
Set a goal. So, we start with, "Okay, we're gonna read for two minutes." But as soon as I see one of them wander, "Okay, we're done. We're not reading tomorrow. We're gonna shoot for two minutes again."
Not to be punitive, but just, this is our goal, and we, and then continuing to teach what reading looks like. I had a fair, in my former school, I had a fairly resistant kindergarten team who was like, "There is no way kindergartners are gonna be reading for 45 minutes, for a year. They just stayed on me. This is not gonna happen." And so, by the second year, when they had truly done the work, by January, you'd go in, and all these kindergartners had a big stack of books. They had their little Post-it note with whatever the teacher had given them to do with their books. And they were just like, "They're reading for 45 minutes straight." So, it just takes coaching and practice to get them doing it.
Do you have a sense, or do you think you could do a personal survey? I mean, not for them to share in the class necessarily, but to see how many kids have books at home or read at home, or parents who read?
If, I'll email you my, I call it an interestalyzer that I just gave. And I have a pile of, it's about six pages long, that I have them do the first day. And that's one of my questions, is how many books do you own? How many are in your house?
Yeah, great. Because I think that's an important piece.
And it's how many books we have in our schools. And I, we need so, I mean, they say, like, up to 300 books per child because, you know, you need to be choosing, and we need to have book clubs. So, it's just constantly bringing that inventory of books into our classrooms for all levels.
When you've been in my room, I have lots.
Yes, you do.
I am a hoarder.
That's great. Thank you.
Thanks.
So, Natalie?
I think, I like the way this looks. I mean, I went through sixth grade, love Maniac McGee, like, all that stuff, but...
But we did it, oh, too much.
Yeah, I like that, you know, it's kind of smaller focus groups almost because, you know, as you go through high school, though, it's almost like you start to just cut kids off and they'll shave off as you get to, like, higher levels. And by the time you get to, like, if you live where I am now, you get this class of maybe, like, 14 students who actually, like, want to read and want to be in the discussion. And everyone else is just like, "Oh, it's too much work. Can't do it." So, I think when you, like, get them at, like, it might be a slower pace for some kids at, in, say, sixth grade. But if they get excited about reading then and actually like it, then I think they'll have more motivation to stick with it, even if they're not necessarily at the same levels.
So, that's interesting you say that, because one of the big shifts that I saw in the school that kind of went from one-size-fits-all to more of a workshop model is, Kylanne Beers talked about a reading ecosystem. So, when you think about an ecosystem, what in your school is supporting reading? And we, we don't have, we, we had, like, the Tournament of Books in our hallway, great start. We had kids buzzing about those books, and that was a great unit. But really being aware of, are kids really, like, at lunchtime, are they carrying their book with them? We have a couple, but not a whole lot. So, in the school I was in, once we kind of shifted to that, the kids were, it sounds really corny, but they were really just kind of buzzing about their books. And if we had an assembly and they couldn't have their independent reading time, they were, like, revolting. So, it just becomes just more of this culture where it's cool. And I think that it, it starts young and moves on.
My concern is, how do you safeguard against having that list real and fake? The ones that just can't, you know, smell the pages of the book, just can't get away from the electronic devices and what have you?
It's really, so some kids are really tough to find what, what fits them. And a lot of times, graphic novels are good for those kids to find a series. One of the really, I forgot to mention this. One of the really cool pieces of research that they said was that if kids are hooked into a series, like books that, you know...
Divergent.
Any of those, even the little ones. Any of those, even the little ones, Junie B. Jones, Magic Treehouse. If they're hooked into a series by third grade, they're more likely to be readers because they've learned how to read for enjoyment. So the kids that you're talking about probably didn't get there. So it's us to, we had Mary Aronsworth as our large group and she said, I had that kid. And I had to, I figured out what genre she likes and just started giving her, okay, so this book is about this, until she could find one book that was of interest to that child and then was able to really give her other books within that same genre. So it's really just kind of figure out what's going to make that kid tick.
And the nice thing is, is in this 35 to 45 minute reading time in my class, they, they don't have the electronic device. So it's more of me though, making sure that they try to stay focused.
Right.
I just, I want to compliment you Becky, on your willingness to evolve in your teaching style. I just, I heard you say that a few times and I think as a professional to a professional, it's really wonderful to hear somebody who's willing to learn a new way. And I, I appreciate that.
You can't teach an old dog Nick Trapp.
You, you are demonstrating that beautifully. And thank you for, for bringing this to the school committee. I think it's really a wonderful new way of embracing reading. And I, I hope that it catches like wildfire in our district. I think it's a, it's a wonderful way to engage people into the love of reading. I was looking at it, I was like, oh, sometimes I think I'm illiterate. Sometimes I think I have free time and I just choose to do other things. And I certainly know how to read, I just don't do it. And so I wonder how many adults in the audience are watching this identify with that also. And we probably model a love of reading to our kids, so we should probably all pick up a book a little more often. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, my friend Caitlin Waddington, would you like to come down and give us the community's school update? I know it's called the annual report. Thank you. And I see that you've got a number of your fantastic staff members here tonight.
I do. Is this in a good spot? People need, I do have a PowerPoint that I'd really like for you guys to see. There's a lot of graphs. If you want to not hurt your neck, please rejoin the front row.
And I think we have a printed copy, so you can follow along.
I actually had to tweak a few things.
You did?
But if you're more comfortable there, it's easy to do that. So I'm just coming to, how to open it from here. Let's all cross our fingers and toes if this works. I'm just going to grab my notes because I dropped off earlier. So. Patience, right? Yep. I apologize, I didn't have this. All right, I'll do the view. Does it cancel? There it is. There it is. And, all right, not. All right, so Nantucket Community School, I'm Caitlin Waddington. For those of you on, watching from the television, I am thrilled to be here. And yes, Melissa mentioned the people in the back, couple of back rows here are community school members, core team members who help make magic happen with our programming. So our mission is to, you know, engage, strengthen and connect the community. You guys know that and you've been a part of watching what we do over the years. And we work really, and we really strive to provide a diverse level of high quality, affordable programs, encourage lifelong personal growth, and reach out to members of the community at all ages and stages. And that really might look different for the different departments that we have. If you're part of the pool, you're strengthening your body, you're swimming, you're also strengthening community and connection with swim teams, or volunteering, having volunteers help with the largest swim for adults. That might look different for early childhood, where we're developing family relationships and best friends and, and parent groups who raise their children together from one of our playgroups or parenting ed classes, all the way through to graduating from high school together. So those look different on how, on how, on what department we have, but it is, it really does transcend all of the different departments. Typically, when I first started here several years ago, five years ago, I was asked to give a yearly review at the very beginning of the summer, because that would be the end of the fiscal year. So that was a hard time for community school to do that, because we're going right into our very intensive summer programming. So I had requested that we do that at the end of the summer. And so now what I've been trying to do for you for several years is give you this picture, seeing the trend of, of involvement or engagement. Engagement and participation for me are the same thing. So how many people are participating or engaging in our activities? And so this is breaking this down by groups. So the first section is the early childhood center drop-in visits. And what you're seeing in that first group of bars is FY12 through FY17. So you'll see it creep up all the way to over 2,000 in the, in the blue and then zero the next year. That was the year that we did not have an early childhood center. We were transitioning to the, we moved to First Way for a year. And during that time, we did not have an early childhood center. And then it, we were able to open that up in, at Candlewick Corner Office. So then again, early childhood education, we started tracking the next set of bars. We started tracking the number of participants in FY15. But prior to that, we did a number of classes. So that's, this is, the next group is child and teen enrichment. And the next after that is adventure summer programs. Community recreation is one of our newest programs that we just started in the last couple of years. We piloted it three years ago. We just finished our second year. Maybe it's better to say we piloted two years ago. And then the next, adult education and enrichment, and you can see that going up and down. And adult literacy. Now, that literacy is really comprised of GED and ESOL. So there have been fluctuations on what type of program we offer with GED. And it switched to high set, the state offered different directions, and we are back to GED. And community pool youth is the first, is the second last set of bars, and that's the youth engagement over the years, as well as community pool adults.
When you ask a question of the community pool youth, is that memberships of people coming to use the pool for free time, or is that some instruction for, what is?
It's all of that combined. And I actually have a slide later that does denote those pieces. So we broke those down across the board for those. But I wanted to give you the overall view of what I typically give you per year. So the five-year trends. For FY17, which was this past fiscal year, not including this past summer, ends July 1st, this is a table that compares the different programs on the left, the different departments, and the number of people served, because that's why we're here, to engage, strengthen. And why are we here? To connect to the community and to be of service. So total participants that for last year were over 13,000, 13,202 people participated in programming. And I broke that down by which area they were in and then what that percentage would be. So 27% of our early childhood education, 27% of our total participation across all of our departments was, was served through the early childhood education programming under Pauline Cronin, who is also here. 7% of children and teen enrichment, or extended day is how it's called in the revolver, 7% of that meets that, the child and teen enrichment area. And so I'm going to break that down a little bit more too, because that seems like, hmm, 7%. And that will speak to what Melissa, maybe you're asking about the breakdown of what counts as, what's the weight of that variable? So driver's education, I combined that with child and teen enrichment for the percentage, because they're teens, the majority of teens. Adventure summer programming, over 1,100 people this year, FY17, 8% of the total. 7% for community recreation, we're in those programs. 6% for adult education enrichment and 1% for adult literacy. The community pool, if you combine all of that, you can break it down, the adult youth, there were over 3,300. And that combined with the pool for the percentage is 44% of programming of the 13,000 people are part of the pool programming. Any questions on that part? So our early child education enrichment part, I wanted to just put pictures up here and a couple of the pictures disappeared in the process of bringing it here. This past fiscal year was absolutely incredible opportunity for us. We added We Whalers to our repertoire. And so Pauline Cronin, Katie Manchester, the entire team really jumped in to help make it happen. And of course, the school committee's support in doing that. So these are pictures actually of, of all the different programs. There's some, there are some We Whalers kiddos in there. There are the different playgroups that we offer, the parenting education, the different engagement, ways that we engage children and parents into our activities and develop that, and bring them into the community and bring them so as they enter, but basically it's a feeder school for the, for the school. We have people that come in and then we get to know them and we're helping transition them into the public school system. We do referrals, we did different pieces that they might need in their support for their early childhood. We Whalers is a big piece of last year. And we also really focused on, Pauline spearheaded this as well, the early childhood childcare needs across the community. So we did an assessment that we involved everybody across the island, invited and went through all our distribution lists and did some translation and brought people in for focus group and did, did that conversation and collected the data that helped demonstrate what the need is for childcare on the island. And we shared that information with the different providers, so they could use that in, in their meetings with their board of directors and how they might want to address what, what was discovered as the need. One of the things that Michael Cozart supported was that it absolutely demonstrated the need for more opportunities or options for programming for four-year-olds, so the pre-K program. So we are, have developed the Cobblestone Kids, and that's something that you'll see going forward this fiscal year. The other piece that really came out of last year and the shedding the light on the need for, for childcare, where there were many, many children on all of these waiting lists. But there were actually even many, many, many more children that weren't even on a waiting list, because even if they got into a spot, they might not be able to afford that care. And so there was a whole gap of children that had been missing. And certainly we, as an early childhood team and as a community school, strive to put those programs in place. But a, a daily process of a children coming in every day, the year before they go to kindergarten, where they're getting that exposure to pre-kindergarten readiness skills and letter and number recognition, all of those pieces are really key. And we, we do implement programs, but if you can get it every day, I mean, you can't pass that up. So we're really excited FY18, we've helped support, Mike Cozart led the way, and we've helped support really making it happen. Where the space is there from you guys and Head Start is full, it started September 11. They're on island, Cape Cod Child Development is coordinating that, they're the leaders of that. And we're glad to have them as roommates in the Ridd cluster. So it's absolutely amazing to see the little guys walking in, the parents, the smiles, the tears when they found out that they were actually going to be able to have their kids in this program. It's very emotional for many of us. And so I wanted to share that. And that was just from this glitch. We all knew these things were happening and, but we wanted to strive and find a way to make that work. And I know that it is a passion and a commitment for the administration, from school committee to principals. I know Kim Kubis is 100%. We really are focused on wanting those kids to get the earliest start possible in the school. And so Head Start is a great solution for that and has long, has been a long time coming. So, but to look at specifically early childhood classes for FY17, the trends, the first graph on the top is about the number of classes in FY12. I'm sorry, I forgot to put the label. But the first bars, 51 classes were offered in FY12, 1,206 parents participated in that programming, parents and kids in that programming. And then, but then it goes up from there. So FY13, 104 classes, almost 2,000 participants. FY14, 117 classes, over 2,000 participants. And then it drops during that year where we had the transition, where we no longer had the early childhood center in the space in the high school. So it drops to 67 classes, 950. That is, those numbers capture, thank goodness for Remain Nantucket and the building at 56 Center Street, because that's where we moved our programming for the classes, the specific play with me, ready, set, school, kindergarten readiness, you know, gosh, the programs for the infants, the welcome baby, all these different activities and programs that we were doing in sharing the space with the early childhood center. We broke that out and offered down at 56 Center and we continue to offer that there now. So we have two locations to provide those. And that's absolutely beautiful. So all the way to this fiscal year, this past fiscal year, FY17, 130 classes were offered, 2,242 participants. And then I broke that down and that's the graph below that. You can see what those different types of activities were happening each year. So the first group is the number of drop-in visits to the early childhood center is completely separate from those other numbers that you saw. So in FY17, the blue bar, 1,281 kids and parents came to the early childhood center. Summer boost breaks out to, we went from 26 several years ago to 35, 37, 47, 25, 28. And I'm missing, oh, that's this current, I'm sorry. The current fiscal year we have, we had 44. And that was due to the need, as well as to finance, financial support from this public school and Michael Horton creating ways to make sure those kids were in a summer boost program. So we talked about that already this year. Pre-K, I've just started a new grid there, so 42 kids in the We Whalers program. And we hope to increase, add numbers to that for the next year. And number of participants in those other playgroups, classes and events total in the early childhood, how that's broken out. And that's 22, 2,242. And you combine that with early childhood and FY17, we're at 3,593. So there's, there's a lot of work going on and that ties right in with the table that talks about 27% of participation. There's a core group of people, talked about Pauline Cronin who's here, Susan Richards is also here with early childhood. We had Tracy Roberts as one of our core team members, Tina Stedman, Steve Gallo, number of people that really, oh, and Michelle, excuse me, where is she? Thank you. Michelle Saravia is our translator, without whom we would not have Head Start. And we, she has done an incredible amount of translation for the program and time and, and all of our other programs. And we really reach out to a number of different diverse groups and she helps us tremendously to make that happen. So did I forget anybody, Pauline? There's a number of people behind the scenes, but those are our core. So thank you to each of you. Child, this kind of, these, these pictures depict our different, before I go on, are there any questions about that part? So these pictures are just a depiction of, depiction of many different programs. So we have child and teen enrichment, community recreation, summer adventure programs, Dance Works falls under, you know, one of the things, we have different revolvers that fund different programs. Community recreation is its own thing. Summer adventure falls under its own revolver. But extended day is kind of the big name that goes over the extended day childcare program, Dance Works, gymnastics, children's and teen enrichment, might be after-school activities for six weeks, might be a fitness program, might be a leadership, YEL, Youth Empowering Lasting Leadership Club program. And these are the pictures of those. There's tremendous work done and trying to identify what people, what kids, what students want, what they're interested in. And then matching that up with, okay, they want this, so now do we have an instructor for that after school? And then matching up when that instructor is available with when we have the space. So those, and then, and then is the space, the space, the type of space that we need. So there are many different variables that go into matching those pieces up. And I've broken down the different programs a bit more, but I just wanted you to see the different pics. And I can't help but not put my son in there, sorry. It's the way it is. Michael Proch is on there too. He's in the bottom left. He is a very popular young man with young kids. So breaking down the extended day revolver, the enrichment, the participation over the last five years, in FY12, you can see the extended day is the first group. And that's the after-school program. And this is where it really comes into what you were talking about, Melissa, the weight of things. So extended day is a number of, the number of children, but they're there from the beginning of the school year till the end of the school year, from 2:30 until 5:15. We count them one time. If we counted them like we count a week-long class, they would be, or a month-long class, they would be there 12, we'd multiply this by 12. But what we really strive to do is keep the numbers, when we're collecting them, as consistent as possible, so there aren't, as long as we're seeing them the same, we're counting them the same way, then we're seeing the increase or the decrease. So breaking this out from the big overall picture is important, so you can see the different weight of things. So FY13, I'm sorry, not FY13. So the next group is children's enrichment. And that fluctuates depending on interests, so 300 and So 371 several years back, we're at 335 in the last fiscal year. Students involved in different programming, gymnastics, fantastics, Dance Works. There were over, there were 191 students in Kelly Corbett's program, in the Dance Works program, and that program is also like Extended Day. It starts in October, or September, excuse me, it starts in September and it goes until May. So we count those kids one time, even though they're in something, you can't find something like this anywhere else. And Kelly has really, really goes above and beyond in finding ways to meet what the kids' interests are and what they're wanting to learn in their next level of dance and expression and also finding ways to fit them into the space, which is great to have the dance studio, it's absolutely phenomenal, and how, and also keeping it quality instruction so that they're learning the next level that they need to without having too many kids in it. But she has, she has filled, has combined some classes to be able to provide that and still keep balance in her life. Additionally, she has an apprenticeship program that is embedded in this. And so we have 10 to 12, each year, 10 to 12 different apprentices that work with her to be her assistant, and they're in the classes, but they're also assisting in the classes. And so that's a really, a value in many ways, but for them, it's a value in their leadership abilities and their teaching. And I know that she comes from a place of building each dancer as an individual, so she really works with them on that. Dance Works, so that's Dance Works, Children's and Dance Works. Teen Enrichment is the next component, the next, the fourth set over, and that's, you know, FY12, FY17, 130 students were involved in that, and that includes the YEL program. That includes many different fitness programs. Blair Janelle is here as well tonight and he coordinates that program. He wears many hats, you'll hear his name again. And he, you know, does, has done some work with the high school, trying to find different ways to do the SAT prep, the Kaplan Program, building different relationships with different organizations to help bring in those classes and those activities that those teens are interested in being a part of and that will help bring them from point A to point B outside of the school day. So he does a tremendous job there. And that was a new program really that we added. He was hired about four years ago. Prior to that, Teen Enrichment was lumped under Children's Enrichment. So I believe bringing a highlighted focus on that age group has helped us expand programming tremendously for those kids. And then Drivers Education is a part of that, those numbers, and it goes from 2012, 147, to 2017, or FY17, 213 kids. And actually breaking that down, there are some adults in that, but there are some adults in every year. We've always kept that uniform. We lumped that together. The adult, the Drivers Ed used to fall under Adult Education, and now Blair has inherited that program. When we moved out to Candlewick, we organized how and who did what department where and when. And so it made sense to put the teen program, the Drivers Ed with teens, more so than with adult education. Any questions about this? I should note, Katie Manchester, she wasn't able to be here tonight, but she does the Children's Enrichment, coordinates that. Absolutely tremendous, has a great way of looking at how to organize programs, run the programs, engage more facilitation, more instructors, and was actually instrumental in helping the Whalers go smoothly. So she was not, that doesn't really fall under Children's Enrichment, but she's a team member and she really stepped up to help us in that arena and is continuing to do so with Cobblestone Kids. And then Elise Campbell is here somewhere, here she is. Elise runs our Extended Day program. She's been here for 12-plus years, I want to say 15, are we at 15? That program is hugely successful. We have, it's about numbers of children. I mean, it shows the specific numbers of children, but it's about providing that nurturing family environment that people look for. And it's open to all children, kindergarten through fifth grade, so NES and NIS, and we have children from both schools that attend that Extended Day program. And Elise and I talk a lot about how do we keep at the core of the program the way it is while expanding numbers? And a lot of that is from her oversight and building up and growing the staff, the childcare specialists that work with those children and have a routine and provide that environment where there's homework help and there's embedded into the day and then kids can know exactly what's going to happen and they have the same childcare specialist with them throughout the week at the same time. And they know today is so-and-so and, or they have this person every day, five days a week, and then they have an assistant other days. So that's been really important and we are already at, so 44 last year, we've already reached over 60 children participating this year. So that's not on this chart, but that's, and that's the beginning of the year, so we expect, we foresee that will go up. All right. Community Recreation, this is a new slide I added, and I do have a printout I can give to you in a few minutes, but I did break down the pieces. This was something Jen requested and I forgot to put, I did, I forgot to put that piece in, I had the other flow. And this is, this is just depicting a total number of participants. Community Recreation is made up of all the different activities that we do as, and Blair Janelle is a coordinator of this, of all the different fields, the town fields, the tennis courts, and so it's nobody or farm fields, Tom Nevers, Essex Park, which is Winter Park on Essex Road, oh my gosh, which is the baseball, Delta Fields. And then the tennis program at Jetty's. And today with us is Lisa Rantz, the tennis manager, she's up here on the left with the blonde hair. Wow, has she grown that program. She's been in place as a manager this past year, and I went up to FY18 on this one so that you could capture the summer since that was something that was asked by Jen specifically. So what you're comparing here in the blue is FY17 and the orange is FY18. So we, the total number of vendors are the different types of organizations that we work with over the course of the year. And then the number of permits, one vendor may have three or four permits depending on when they're setting that program up with us, might have only two, depends, because, and then we have split it by summer vendors. And I do have a printout to add to your, to that, add to your packet because that was not included in the original. Any questions on this part? Something that we did not offer last fiscal year were the round robin tennis classes and programming, and that is something that Lisa really brought in, that and different fitness classes to tennis that really engaged a large number of people in being healthy and being creative in how to create permit slash memberships for that program. So then our adventure summer programs, again, same type of thing, FY12 through FY18 for each group, I broke it down. But when people often think, oh, adventure summer, adventure programs, it's camps, it's just camps, and I kind of lumped them all together, but we really actually made a number of different needs through this program. We have programs that are, the day camps, day camps run from the morning until 4 o'clock. It's really designed to meet our year-round islanders' needs for childcare for their kids and give them that island experience that everybody else comes to Nantucket for, but we're all working too busy, we're all too crazy busy working to be able to give that to our own kids because we've got to work with three jobs we have to work. And so they do field trips, they go everywhere, and that's managed, they really have an incredible, my son went to more places in the first two weeks that we lived on this island than I had ever been when I'd been visiting. So it's a tremendously supportive and helpful program. And the other piece of that is a number of the kids that we bring into that program that are year-round kids, 75% of enrollment in that program are year-round children. There are kids that might not be in any other camps because we do have people that have the resources or experience to work with them. So we try to be very, to really create successful opportunities. So we might even adjust a day so that kids can participate and be successful, and maybe they're not doing a full day, but they're doing a half day because that's what they need. Or maybe they're not doing field trips because they can't handle all those transitions. And what do we need to do to help support that family so that family can go to work and these kids can grow socially and in all the other ways that they do. So that's something that is unique to adventure summer programs. The next part is that these are specialty camps that we added, culinary, Chinese camp, early bird, where we open early for the kids. So we had 186 of those last year and 229 during this, so this goes to 18, sorry, so 229 participants in our camps, in our specialty camps, 428 participants in our day program. And then 646 this year in our sports camps and 525 last year. So we have gone up in that area as well. So, and then the total shows the full kit and caboodle all combined together, day, sports, and specialty. We're working on adding even more specialty camps this fiscal year. We added Bob Berkey, we added, we had Tony DeChica with us, his program passed away, but his program was with us this year. And so there are a number of different pieces. The sports programs are really half-day programs and a lot of our, a lot of our specialty programs, our specialty camps are also half-day programs. And so that meets another need that people are looking for. And so we try to be, we try to find that niche and fill that if people are looking for that. Any questions on this so far? Okay. So Adult Education and Enrichment, this is just a background page. We are doing tremendous work there. Cheryl Reiquin is not able to be here tonight, she's off island. Under her leadership, we have really worked and made great strides in finding, identifying the gaps specifically with the EL population on how to adult population. We know what the EL population is for children, we know how it's impacting the schools. They all come with parents or caregivers or family that are taking care of them, and there are needs at that level as well. And she really worked with, we have grants during FY17 that helped fund the EL Symposium. We've brought over, I'm going to say, I just blanked on his name, John Santiago, I think his last name, I blanked on his name, but he's from Cape Cod Community College, and he is real focused on developing programs for adults, learning English, how to get them into college, the transition piece. And that's been a huge focus for Adult Education and Enrichment. There's an enrichment piece and there's the education piece. There's the distance learning and then there's the online, on-island learning. And we're, we're trying, what we've found is distance learning is really hard for folks in a community where we're already isolated. So bringing people together to do those online classes or bringing people together to do a specific program as a cohort is more motivating and engaging and relevant for them to do it that way than to separate it out individually. So we also did a big focus on nonprofit development resources. So we had Janice Kinder worked with us and we worked with a number of different organizations on strategic planning as a consultant and doing some classes, and that was also very successful. We are now a certified Pearson View test center and we're back to doing the GED and we have a GED prep. The reason that this is so important is, A, we've done GED testing, we've been a test center for a long time, but there hasn't been a preparation piece to that. So we're going to be implementing that this year through a grant, through the community fund, Nantucket Fund, through the Community Foundation for Nantucket. And the ESOL or EL programming is being funded in part through Remain Nantucket Fund. Significant amounts of funding that we addressed and we knew we needed to bring in for this fiscal year that we were working on over the past year to have that happen. And so these different programs will be available, people can test out for the GED on island and we've been able to do that. But now, if you have a, if you want to take also, if you want to be certified in a test, an IT test or anything that's offered by Pearson View, there was, we are now, we have it on island, you do not have to leave the island to do that, you can come down to community school, talk with Cheryl, you can register for the pieces on Pearson View, everything is set up and there's test times, all of those pieces that would happen anywhere else for Pearson View when you test, you would be able to do on island. And I'm going to talk a little faster because I know I'm taking a lot of time. That 10-minute piece, right? It's 10 minutes that we all have that we can focus, so I probably lost you 20 minutes ago. Adult Education and Enrichment sub-specialties, just looking at this, FY12 to FY17, we had 851 people participating in regular adult education enrichment, and then we had 62 in ESOL this past fiscal year. And all of our different programs, we are always striving to maximize resources, avoid duplication, collaborate wherever possible, and focus on gaps in service. That's something, that's a quote from Cheryl Reiquin, and also focus on those programs we do best. I don't think I could say it any better than how she said it, and that's what all of our different departments are focused on. And then I have the community pool, different pictures here, some things to think about with the community pool where I think most people go straight to the swim, the swim team and the Learn to Swim classes, and definitely those are absolutely things that are happening. Besides the regular kids Learn to Swim classes, we also do the adult Learn to Swim classes. And there are, over the past two years, over 60 people are learning how to swim that are adults, that are really, those are life skills that they need on this island as well. And so bringing, bringing people together that might have been scared, there's a big part that Jim Pignato and Todd Bohannon, Aquatics Director and Aquatics Assistant Coordinator, are here tonight and they spend our, the hours they put into our kids through all of the different classes are also, can't go unnoted. This shows the trends over the years. This is one of the slides I had to switch, Melissa, because I actually had the name wrong. So adults and youth. Oh. Jim, is that accurate? Because I'm sitting here, this, we changed it. I'm going to make sure.
Yep.
I'm just making sure because I'm...
The handout's correct.
Okay, the handout's correct. So, so the handout's correct. The other piece that we wanted to bring your attention to is what the aquatics department does for the school system with physical education. So the PE and, the PE teachers in aquatics really collaborate and figure out when, how many classes, who, you know, who, when and where are they going to be, how do you fit it into this, out of the schedule of the high school, out of the elementary, out of the middle, and fit the kids into where they need to be and then fit other programming in that they have to balance to provide to the community in among all of that. So I think some things that we've never looked at before, but 66% of the academic year during the academic day, the aquatics department is focused on providing service to our students. And at NHS, that works out to 57 days a year over a 12-week period, or 12 weeks, 217 hours, averaging about 18 hours per week. CPS is 35 days over eight weeks and then averages about a little over 15 hours per week, and NES is 24 days over five weeks, averaging about 19 hours a week. So, and that piece at the NES level is really sometimes the very first time that they're learning anything about water safety. And, and those pieces, some of them have never put their face in water, and we live on an island, so. We absolutely love our new home. We are over, now located at 30 Surfside Road with NES, with our new roommates. We love that, we missed being on campus and we are glad to be back on campus. We are going to be having the open house and that is going to be Wednesday, October 4th. You're all invited, everybody listening, you are invited, 4:30 to 6 o'clock. And what's really exciting about being in that space is that it's really helped us come together as a team, consolidated where we are, but we're also able to provide the Early Childhood Center right there. People can enter our office right there, get to all of the coordinators. We have the red cluster, we have Extended Day doing programming there. So we have three or four programs and Head Start's in the same cluster. And we're also sharing with Special Ed, the district conference room, and the EL Director and Special Ed Director. And that actually really makes sense because when, when we think about who, the kids that we have and what we're doing, I think we can help bridge some of those connections, especially from early childhood. And we are, we're really very grateful, actually really very grateful for the space and even when we hit our heads for other spaces that we might need, this is, this is a tremendous way to start FY18 for us. And I really can't, and I know that there may be questions, but I really must, I can't emphasize enough the level of dedication that my team has. And I call them my team because we work together, but it's our team and how much they put in every day to make things work for our community. And so I just want to say thank you, and I think that we should give them a hand because that's how I feel. Any questions?
Yes.
Will there be refreshments at the open house?
There will be. There will be. We know how to throw a party.
Thank you. That was great, that was great numbers.
Thank you.
It's good to see.
I'm exhausted from all of that you do.
It's a team effort. Any questions, anybody?
I, I do, just a couple of, just a couple of points for clarification, and you gave a very thorough... a very thorough presentation, so thank you. Just my own personal interest, you mentioned gymnastics, did you through one of those pieces? So I just remember that particularly being a class that was difficult to schedule because of space and everything. But, so are you doing that, how often are you offering that?
So we are, we did offer it last year, thank you for asking. So gymnastics, fantastic. Katie Manchester manages that program under children's enrichment. We offered it last year on Saturday, several days a week. We actually had Nantucket, the Nantucket Yacht Club sponsored or host in-kind donation of their space during the winter. So we were able to run a program from December until April and we ran that three days a week and we had an instructor to do that and an assistant. That's been a really very wonderful way to keep the kids busy in the summer, build their strength, build their, build their strength for any future sport that they might do. And we are continuing that. We have Kristen Lob coming from the Cape who has a program there. We used her, we hired her a couple of years ago and she came from Off Cape. And so she will be doing that again this year. We're going to be starting that up shortly. And it's, people have already signed up, it's exciting. We absolutely hit space issues for that. We won't always be able to access the yacht club. That was a nice gift for the year and we certainly appreciate their donation. It was absolutely incredible. But sometimes we hit barriers on when we can use space. So again, that, going back to that, that recipe for success, having the instructor available at the same time that we have the interest level, at the same time that we have access to space. And sometimes there are parameters on space that were, that kind of thwart those efforts. So, so we're very excited. We know that we'll be able to start at least this beginning piece on Saturday mornings.
I just remember it always being very, very popular with the community.
It is, it is.
And I remember those challenges very well of space and also interest and also then being able to put all of that together by sharing space at the school. Can you just remind everybody what the percentage is? I mean, I think this is so impressive and I know when we look at your budget and I'm obviously very familiar with your budget, but I just think it's very impressive, the percentage of your overall budget, what is the appropriation compared to other income?
So it's between 28% and 30%, depending on if you look at we budgeted and what the actual was. So 30% of the overall budget was appropriation this past fiscal year. And so the rest of that, we, the rest of the cost of the budget, you know, over $800,000 is through program fees that we generate through all the different programs that I described. And, and those fund all of the different programs that don't fund, that aren't funded or that are free to the community. And so it's, it's a, it's a balance. And then we also apply for different grants every year and we have an incredibly generous community. I was computing out how much has been donated over the last five years and it's over, over a million dollars, a million 15,000 in five years has been donated from local programming as well as a state grant for the CSD.
That's impressive.
It is, it really is.
I had no idea.
So.
I could live. And just, also I have to just commend you and your staff on getting Head Start here. It's something that we've been trying to do for so many years and I had an opportunity to see the classroom in action and with Mike last week and it was just, it's fabulous.
Everyone's invited to stop by.
And also commend your staff for moving the amount of times that you have and I'm glad that nobody's, you're finally at home, hopefully that nobody wants to move.
We really love our space and we really want to stay there for as long as possible. And we thank you for the different places that we've been able to go to. That certainly cannot go without being said, but it's nice to not have to, to think that we won't have to juggle moves amidst when we're running programming and key programming that funds our programs. So, so this will be a nice year to go forward in that regard.
Well, congratulations to you.
So I have a couple of questions and comments. All the accolades that Pauline gave and also for Head Start, but also to the staff, I think that the community school, by evidence of, of the numbers of participation, the volume of programs you offer is very impactful in our community and it's impossible to do without the engine of, of the team behind you. So thank you. I want to touch on probably what are some of the harder questions though, and I want to talk a little bit about impact versus revenue and costs. And I think we're going to get there a little bit in some of the budget and I don't, I see your eyes whining, I don't want to throw you.
No, no, you're not throwing.
But I think one of the things that would be really important add-on to this budget or to this presentation tonight is for us to understand the percentage of the budget allocation versus the impact it's having by program. So I was sort of sketching out, you know, if this is the community school and here are the buckets of how we have the programs, what percent, and these are very similar to your budget presentations, what percentage of the whole unit are those by budget and how much of those are offset by fees and so on and so forth? Because it's almost impossible to digest the impact by just the numbers of participation alone. And I think where some of the disconnect maybe comes from in the community is what the impact is versus what it costs us to produce that. And so I would just urge you, when we're doing these conversations or have these opportunities to talk about the impact, to align it with the number and the need and this wonderful support of the over a million dollars in five years, I, I just, I think we, we need to do a better job demonstrating as a school community what the impact of the community schools' programming is on the overall community. And I think that's one way that, that we can do that. And then I think I would also love to hear back from you. Again, I know through budget conversations, we're going to talk about what the future of the community school looks like, but I think because it is so tied into that programming and the program revenue, where do we see ourselves making adjustments in the coming year? And how are we going to change our tack so that we're not providing redundant services?
Correct.
If, if in fact we are, what kind of assessment we're doing on our programs to make sure that we're continuing to meet the needs? And it's, I want to say all of this in the context that it's, it's, the work that you're producing is, is fantastic. And the effort going into it is fantastic, but I think the reality is we have to do a really hard look at making sure that we're aligning the resources with what the community needs and, and have those conversations. So I felt like what was missing from this for me was where are we going in the, in the next year?
Well, I can answer a little bit.
Sure, sure.
We will definitely go more in-depth with budget. I actually have this really beautiful depiction of exactly what you're asking for, but felt that it was really more appropriate to bring into the budget conversation.
Okay.
So I will absolutely bring that forward. It really demonstrates the percentage of who's in, how many people are involved and how much of the budget is being used towards that.
Perfect.
And it actually really mirrors each other.
Great.
So, which is, is affirming for me.
Yeah.
In what we're doing, that we're meeting, that we're not off track.
Yeah.
The other piece that I wanted to say is that we, we were aware of what was going on last fiscal year, or FY17 with the budget. We, we were aware that that was happening as it was happening, we just thought it was, we didn't hit our revenue target. We've already implemented and we were doing that even before the fiscal year end and the different grants that we've applied for to, to, to address some of that. So we're going in, we've gone into FY18 already with everything implemented. Not that there aren't other ways to, and certainly if, if anybody has suggestions on other ways that we can adjust things that are more in line with, with making the budget hit a zero, because the goal is to hit zero. And sometimes we hit it and sometimes we don't.
Right.
So.
And I just want to say, because I know that it's, it's complicated and I, I look forward to the budget conversation for sure. And I would just, when you prepare that, because this is a department of, or a part of the town that the, the school committee quote-unquote manages, but it's really funded in large part through that appropriation from the town. And only 30% of the, of your budget is offset by that appropriation. Where the balance of those funds comes from and how that's aligned to this programming and these numbers is such an important part of the story. And I, you know, I, I don't want to take any more time tonight on it, but I just, you know, I'm really looking forward to seeing that so we can see the impact and what that impact translates into, into dollars.
Absolutely. Thank you, Melissa. Are there any other comments or questions, Natalie?
Fantastic, fantastic job. And thank you all for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
We won't be offended if you walk away, but we encourage you to stay.
Thank you so much.
Because we're voting on a lot of cool things next. Great. So may I have a motion to approve a gift donation of school supplies from, for NPS from St. Paul's Church?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? May I have a motion to approve a transfer of $500 from the CPS student activities account to Mermaids and Mentor's student activity account for school-wide mentoring services?
Move for you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion to approve a gift donation from Remain Nantucket to the Nantucket Community School for $20,000 for adult education ESL and $10,000 for GED preparation and adult basic education classes?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? A motion to accept complimentary winter membership to NPS from the Westmore Club?
Move for you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
A motion to approve the September 5th, 2017 meeting minutes?
Move for you.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And a motion to approve the transfers and invoices? I'm sorry.
Sorry.
May I have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Okay, and so we will pass on the superintendent's report since our superintendent is not here.
Oh, let's make it up.
Yeah, really. Are there any subcommittee or work group updates? I know strategic planning met and we're moving that forward.
Yeah, I think we met with someone and we're entertaining, she submitted a proposal recently and we're looking at that and I think we'll hear more of that in the next meeting.
Fantastic, a facilitator that would lead us through that. Fantastic, great, wonderful.
Negotiations are moving ahead.
That's right, with the teachers, teaching assistants, TAs.
And somewhat glacial face.
Fantastic. Okay, any additions or comments to the agenda for the October 3rd meeting? I think at that meeting we'll vote to approve those budget directives, so if you have any comments or concerns, please get them to Mike or I. And without further ado, may I have a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
Thank you all very much.
Thanks, everyone.
I haven't read this, it's like I'm reading something.